I got my last page.
You might not stay the whole time.
It's for free.
I'm not going to be here long.
You're for free from now on out. Good evening, welcome to the April 9th, 2013 meeting of the Manchester Town Council. Looks like our minutes are not quite ready for review and approval yet, so we'll handle those next meeting. So first order of business is approval, or rather, the receipt of the March 2013 Treasurers' Report. You do have a copy here printed out.
Make a motion that we receive the Treasurers' Report for March 2013.
I second the motion.
Motion's second. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor's report, we have a few things to announce here. First, we do have an election coming up, May 21st. The polls will be open here at the town office from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. The election is for three council positions. Councilman Doug Myers is running for reelection.
Maybe.
Did you say maybe? Councilman Doug Myers has filed to run for election.
That's improper statement.
Okay. We have two councilmen that decided not to run, so, you know, I know we'll have one more meeting and get a chance to thank them publicly, but Councilman Dan Riley, who's been, you know, involved with the town in one aspect or another for about five decades, has decided not to run for reelection this time. So, on behalf of myself and the rest of the town, thank you for your decades of service.
It's time to get some good council members, so I'm finished.
So despite...
It's gonna have to have a part-time person to do the work.
What work?
From a desk.
And Councilman Todd Bender, I believe, has been here for eight years? Is that right now?
Well, compared to 50, does it matter?
Yeah. So, thank you for your eight years.
For my little bit of service.
And for everybody out there, if they get a chance to thank these gentlemen, please do so, you know, having been here for a couple of years myself, you get an appreciation for the amount of time and effort and once in a while grief that you get for spending your time. So, thank you, guys. In addition to Doug Myers, we have Eugene DePalmer, who's filed, Deborah Howe, Melinda Smith, and Dale Wilder. So again, there's five registered candidates for office and three open positions on May 21st. Please keep in mind, water bills are due April 30th. That's coming up. Couple other April dates, we have brush pickup on April 16th. Again, we amended that, I think, about six months ago, maybe a year ago, so it has to be like four feet in length, or no more than four feet in length, no greater than four inches in diameter. We had those storms come through last year and people essentially just kind of drug a whole tree out into the road. And that's not really... We weren't able to successfully handle that. And then, right back to back, we do have bulk trash pickup on April 17th. And I believe you're supposed to call for that still, right? Call Hughes, let him know what you have, and if it's like a... They'll give you instructions. If it's a refrigerator, I think you're supposed to take the door off, that kind of stuff. We have a scholarship, the town scholarship, or rather, the Charlotte Colette Scholarship that is coming up, so anybody that lives here in town, it's a $1,000 scholarship available to a graduating senior. Applications are due May 1st. You can pick up applications here in the town office, and I believe they're also available on our website. And then, finally, with our Board of Zoning Appeals, we have some opportunities for any interested parties that may be looking for an opportunity to volunteer in the town, but maybe not quite, you know, at the level where you're gonna be, you know, doing a couple meetings a month and phone calls outside, but it is an opportunity to serve. So we do need some volunteers for Board of Zoning Appeals. That's all I have. Any questions? All right, moving right along. Steve with the Town Administrator Report.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in front of you the Administrative and Public Works Report for March 2013. We'll start with the administrative report under pending issues. The Sheetz expansion MTB issue. Environmental Alliance, on behalf of Sheetz, has requested MDE to reduce sampling in regards to the town's water sources, which will most likely be denied by MDE. I talked to them a few weeks ago. The SHA projects, there have been no movement on those. The solar project, you've all received a copy of the draft, it was studied by CQI, and that was the first study, the first draft. CQI may be approaching the Mayor and Council at the May meeting with the final report. Under the Ethics Ordinance, as you know, the initial draft went to the State Ethics Board for review. Their council had some questions, which in turn came back to our attorney for some changes. The changes have been made, and it's back in the hands of the State Ethics Commission for approval. Charter change in regards to the police chief and the town administrators. Dialogue has been started between the Mayor and Councilperson Black, our attorney, and myself in regards to this. The MEA grant, it appears that we're going to receive $20,000 in grant monies. The application was completed and was sent in on March 20th. I put in for four projects. A new natural gas furnace for town hall, a new furnace for the sludge press room at the wastewater treatment plant, a solar project for town hall, and a solar project for our maintenance shop. What will happen now is those projects will be reviewed by MEA's people, and they'll be contacting me, and they'll find out what the biggest bang for our buck is, and then they'll make the decision. I did follow up with Principal Clark at Manchester Valley in regards to a youth representative. He was to get back with me this week. Councilman Bender, did you hear anything? I didn't hear anything from Randy either, so I'll keep you apprised on that. New construction, construction continues. Miscellaneous items, our zoning administrator, Michelle Wilder, attended training on February 28th, 2013, in regards to sustainable communities grant application process. I attended the Carroll County Utilities Advisory Committee on March 7th. Staff members Tracy Brooks, Laurie Miller, and myself attended a training on March 27th at CMC. Carroll Media Center in regards to placing emergency information as a crawl message on cable channels 19 and 23, that's such as road closures, water main breaks, et cetera. That's a good piece of information there. They... It's a good facility. We, as a town, are really not using that facility to the best of our ability, and I'm going to contact Marion Ware, and I'm going to see if we can't use them a little bit more than what we've been using them, so... My final item on miscellaneous items, Mr. Riley and I attended the monthly WRCC meeting on March 27th. Moving right along, the March Public Works Report. Under Water, you have in front of you the monthly Water and Wastewater Status Report for March. The Manchester Valley High School Pumping Station, that status, that project's approximately 15% complete, and our maintenance department has completed the roof project at Patricia Court Pump House. Under Wastewater, we did our switch over to spray irrigation on March 1st with no problems. Under NPDS and stormwater, our Department of Public Works staff completed their required annual NPDS training on March 14th in regards to illicit discharges, and we had outfall inspections by Carroll County, which took place on March 21st with no problems. Under Maintenance Roads and Parks, the skate park additions, as you remember, Mr. Curtis Blank was in here at our last meeting. My maintenance supervisor and I met with our insurance carrier on site on April the 4th. We showed him the proposed additions, and he sees no problems, as long as the construction is done under the supervision of town personnel. So we sent an email out to Curtis, and he did respond back, so hopefully he'll be starting on his first project down there. The gazebo project at Christmas Tree Park is about 80% complete. Road resurfacing projects, they've been advertised, and the bid opening is May 13th. The MML Geocache site, which was launched January 5th, has had about 50 visitors so far, as per the logbook, and we had three snow and ice events in the month of March, which I really didn't like those, but that's the way it goes. Any questions for me?
I did stop by and looked at that gazebo, it was looking nice.
That is a good project. That was the idea of our Director of Finance, Kelly Baldwin. That was a very good idea.
One good idea, and that's it? Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Moving right along. Police report. We don't have updated numbers yet, you know, typically we share some high-level metrics of kind of, you know, what's happened in terms of, you know, arrests and activities and things, so we'll catch up on that next month. An update on the chief is that the search and vetting process is ongoing, and, you know, given that we're so close to the election, we're going to hold the vote, you know, I'll say, you know, make the nomination and confirmation vote for the new chief after the next council takes place. Theory behind that is that, you know, the next council is really gonna be, you know, spending their time working with the next police department as that... As we continue to have some changes over there to, again, upgrade and really make that a first-class police department. So, my feeling is to have, given that we could have, you know, two, three, we'll have at least two and maybe three new council people, to have those council people vested and involved in helping in that selection process.
So, have we met all the guidelines and the deadlines currently? Is there any reason why we can't vote, or why you couldn't nominate tonight?
Charter-wise?
Well, yeah, I mean, he's... The man's... We've done everything. Is there anything else that needs to be done? I mean, Mrs. Smith said last month, you know, why aren't we voting? Go back and play the tape.
No, I was here, I know what you said.
I know, but, I mean, it seems like if you wait in two months, okay, we've been a year. We wait two more months, and you get a new council in here, okay? If it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, do you have a number-two selection? So, and then, how are you gonna bring them up to speed of what's going on? And then, in June, if it fails, then you're gonna have to have another person, and then, how many months is that gonna take? I can foresee that we don't have a police chief, I mean, it's gonna take two months to do the background checks and everything else that we have to do. It's gonna take forever. We will not have a police chief until September. Easily.
I understand your concerns. My judgment call is to let the new council vote.
I understand your judgment call, but you want me to vent now? I'll give you one last chance, because everybody else gets a chance to vent, and you know what? I sit up here on this seat, and I don't get a chance to vent. I have more power and more voice standing in front of that microphone than I do sitting up here. And that's why I said earlier that I might not be running, because I'm gonna withdraw come tomorrow, because I have more voice out there, and that's what I'm gonna do.
That's...
You know? Your prerogative. I know it's my prerogative. This shouldn't have gotten this far. I called for meetings back in July of last year. You are... You know, you wanna have one meeting a month, that's all you wanna have, and I've told you this, and I'm very grateful for everything you do with the football program, but, you know, I think that the only reason that you're in office is so that you can use this room and so that you can use the video equipment to come in here and watch the football films. And that's happened. That's... I'm telling the truth.
I think that's probably an unfair characterization.
It might not be...
So to say I use this... I've used this room like any other community member, or the Boy Scouts have used this room, sure, I've used this room probably a half dozen times.
Can I bring my family in here to have a family reunion and watch old films?
You have?
Can I?
Have I told you you couldn't? I don't?
I don't know, I'm asking.
I think this is a different conversation, Doug. I sent you an email...
You sent me an email, and I'm not going down that road anymore. I'm done. You have private phone conversations, you tell one person one thing, you tell another person another thing, and I'm done. And I'm gonna come out here, because that's where you get the attention, because that's where people got the attention. And I heard that the reason why you aren't gonna vote, or didn't wanna nominate, because Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Howe, you didn't want them to gain any momentum and go forward for their election. Well, guess what? You're gonna have four people running now, and one of them people are gonna be on there.
Somebody, and Doug, someone's gonna get elected.
That's true.
And I want them to vote on who the next chief's gonna be.
That's fine.
I'm sorry it took this long. Are you involved in the process?
It's a slap in the face... I know, it's a slap in my face, it's a slap in your face for being on the committee. Everybody was given the chance up here to be on the committee, nobody wanted to be in. It's a slap in Hampstead Police Department's face that we gave somebody permission to go and do more investigation. It's ridiculous. It is ridiculous, and there is no reason why...
Doug...
We've met all the goals, and there's no reason why we couldn't have a nomination tonight.
We're gonna move on.
All right, well then, I'm outta here. Good night.
That's your prerogative.
It is my prerogative. And Mrs. Smith, I guess the town of Police Department's moved out to your office, and you're so... And you're believing one person out of 5,000 people...
Doug, I'm not...
5,000 people, one person has made a complaint, you know, and she's supposed to...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You can say afterwards.
All right.
She knows the law, she parks out, and right in front of the sign that says, "No parking." There was rampers out there.
It's not a public area yet. It's not a public area, I've checked, I've checked.
We're gonna move on. I'm gonna leave it at this. You've been involved with me more than anybody has in the selection process.
I know.
I'm sorry, you're not happy with it?
I am not.
I've involved you, but this is the way we're handling it from here.
Good night.
I'll be good for you. If you need some campaigning, I'll help you.
This is a change of direction, and it seems... We have an action item next.
Correct.
Which is request for permit to spray chemicals in rent a property located within Manchester.
That is correct. As per our code, any property that abuts the town of Manchester property, whether it be in town or out of town, permission has to be granted by the town to the farmer to spray the chemicals. Mr. Colt Rider, who has done this for numerous years, of course, writes a letter to the town and requests to... Permission to spray the chemicals listed on the properties that he has listed, so... And he, again, he has done this for at least, that I can remember, for at least 25 years.
Right, and this is something we do every year.
That is correct.
We've taken a vote.
Yes.
You guys probably all remember this.
Yeah.
So do we have...
I'll make a motion we approve it. He sends it every year.
I'll second that.
Motion's second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries. We have... Kelly, do you wanna handle the cleaning bid?
Sure. Who seconded that? I'm sorry.
I didn't touch it.
That's Ben.
We have a cleaning contract right now, and we have decided to put it out on bid. We've had the cleaners for probably, I'll say, four years. I think we went a year past the contract. So we put it out to bid, and we received back four bids, which I think I emailed you this bid tab, but anyway. And the low bid was Jenny King. I also did some checking on the references. They tend... They are a franchise, but the gentleman that has the contract in this area, he has buildings that he takes care of in Baltimore City, Baltimore County. I spoke to the references there and someone in Caroline County, and they were the low bid to do this building and the police department once a week, and that's what the price is, 70, which is just a little less than what we're paying now. And you can see that they go all the way up to 170. This does not include the museum. We spoke... I spoke to Mr. Riley, and basically, he and his wife have been taking care of the basement. Because we only have it done once a week, and, I mean, once a month, and we asked that it be done the weekend before, the first Sunday of the month when they're open, I think the cleaners tend to forget to take care of that, so Mr. Riley has been doing it, and he said, you know, it's...
Who did the cleaning this month down there?
The current vendor.
Well, they're the ones that didn't set the alarm. So, anyway.
So we've decided, and we'll be honest, when we did these specs several years ago, we weren't as specific as we should have been, and, you know, live and learn, I'll say. So we tightened them up. Steve tightened them up. We met with the police department, asked them, okay, what would you like to see done differently? I fully expected the bid to come back a lot higher, because it seemed like we had asked for more things to be done, and so, this is what we have, and we would like to end the contract with the current vendor and go with this new vendor. I think it's a three-year contract. That's awful, I don't even have...
You wanna go with Jenny King?
Yes.
Now, you meant... You made mention you contacted references.
Yes.
But you didn't tell us what they said.
They were very happy with... But they did say, the one, Baltimore County, said, "We learned the same thing, that, you know, it's all in your specs, your scope of work." But that they did try to work... This gentleman did try to work with the staff. They have a different situation, they have some building... They have one building that may handle like a homeless shelter or several different types of functions in one big building. Square footage was like 100,000 or so, it was a huge number, and so, there were a lot of different needs, and they did not have the scope of work. One group wanted one, and another group wanted another, and since... It was just one of those things that they learned as well, and they had revised theirs, and they just said that's what they would recommend, and I said, no, we had the same thing, and we think we've... We're hoping that we've covered that, but they were very happy with them.
The specs are very tight. I guess...
If they don't live up to the specs, we can cancel the contract.
Yes.
At any moment, right, so?
To be fair to the current contract, the vendor, we did... They did work with us as much as they could with what they could do. Obviously, they were gonna take another two hours to do the things we wanted them to per visit.
Sure.
So, I mean, I'm not gonna complain about them, but I do think it's time that we...
Okay. So Kelly, you said this does not include the museum downstairs.
Right.
So do we have a plan for the museum downstairs going forward?
Um...
Moving right along, my wife and I keep it open, that's what it depends on, so...
Or does it make sense, you know, or could we, if we've tightened the specs up, to say that really the bid we're looking for is four times up here a month and one time down there a month?
We did. We actually did that.
But that's not what this is?
The 70 on represents this building and the police department. They did give us a price, all the museum, but after talking with Mr. Riley, he said, you know, we're basically doing it.
You'd prefer to have it that way?
Yeah, well, we used to clean it anyway, so might as well do it and not pay someone.
What's the price difference?
Not always, but we... We're only ever in there the first Sunday, and my wife and I always go in either Friday or Saturday and clean everything up. So, and I could tell from one month to the next that the trash cans weren't emptied, and so, it was my thought, we do it anyway, and once we leave, then you can do whatever you want.
I mean, my opinion is, and I'm seeing it, and Dan, you can step in if you'd like, that I think we ought to have somebody at least empty the trash, take care of the floors, take care of some of the major stuff, and then if you and your wife wanted to look at some of the artifacts and, you know, make sure they were okay.
Well, most of the things are under glass, you know?
Yeah.
And what is really...
And they didn't touch that. That was not something we wanted them to touch.
You know, it's a basement, and in any basement, you have... Don't matter, we have... Termites, people come in, the termites come in, but there's always dead bugs and things, and even if they did clean, it might be something there when we come in that Sunday, so...
What...
So I don't... My wife and I don't mind doing it, and it'll save you a couple bucks if we could spend it somewhere else if we want.
What maybe we could do is talk to Jenny King and say, hey, at this point, we don't want to sign up for this, but we would like to... There may be a time in the future that we would like to then start doing the basement and see if that works for them.
Yeah, I just have the option.
Right.
It's just, you know, I mean, you're always free to do whatever you want down there, but just to put it on you and make it your responsibility when we're really talking a couple dollars.
I think it's about $100 per month that they... When they clean, once a month, it would be $100.
So it's 280 a month for up here and the police department, and it's 100 extra just for down there?
Mm-hmm.
That seems a little strange. There's a whole lot more going on up here and over there.
I don't know, well, I'm satisfied. We'll keep on cleaning. I think there'll be some changes made down there and maybe some changes and...
How about if we approved this bid with giving the town the option to add the basement in later?
That's fine with me, I'm just...
You okay with everybody?
Yep.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we accept Jenny King's bid of $70 per week with the provision that the town has flexibility to add the basement museum at a future date if necessary.
I'll second it. Motion's second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. It's that time of year again, we have ordinance 212, which is introducing the fiscal year. Again, this is just introducing, we're not voting on the budget tonight. I know we've been a little disjointed in terms of us as a group, working on this, which has put even more onus on Kelly and Steve and the other directors in town and their staff to really tidy this thing up and get it to the point where it's something where we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. So, big picture stuff is, and I'll let Kelly weigh in on this, is that we're introducing a budget that maintains the current tax rate at 21.6 cents, and I believe we decided to maintain the water and sewer rate as well, right?
Correct.
Which is something that was, you know, we were really going back and forth on how to do that this year, essentially savings, right? So we, you know, things went up a little bit last year in terms of rate, and we didn't spend as much from savings this year. This year, tried to maintain the rate, but spent a little bit more from savings. So, I know some of you guys have been here year over year. For those that are not, some of the challenges with a town budget like this is, has to be balanced every year, right? So it's not like the federal government where you just kind of print your own money or borrow from China or do whatever else. And we have, really, our major source of revenue is property tax, so property tax is composed of the value and the rate, and as you all know, values have been going down, and we've been doing our best to kind of hold rates as steady as we could, although they've been creeping up a little bit over the past number of years. But our cost drivers are all going up, so for any... See, if you think of this as a business, it's not a business, we don't make money, but the costs go up, so that's people, health insurance, liability insurance, workers' comp. One of the main things we do is pave roads, which is obviously a petroleum-based product, and we all know that's not cheaper than it was five years ago. So, it's been a very challenging year over year to find a way where we have all our costs going up, and we're not like the 90s or the early 2000s where real estate was also going up to kind of feed the other side. So that's where we are. So we're introducing a budget tonight that we do have a little bit of work to do to kind of, as additional figures come in over the next month, before we vote on this, we'll be able to kind of say, okay, this is... We can kind of plug and play a little bit here as we get better numbers on what some of these figures will be, but we are introducing a budget that will keep the tax rate the same for this next year, which I think is positive, so thank you to Steve, thank you to Kelly, and everybody else in town, and all of you that put in a lot of time to try to make this happen.
And we'll have that budget work session, just to fine-tune.
Right. Hopefully, everybody can make that in a 20-second. So again, yeah, that'll be the piece when we get a few more numbers in on insurance and electricity and things. So, that being said, anybody like to read it, or you want me to read it? Ordinance, I'll hit the highlights here, just so we read it for the record. Ordinance 212, the town of Manchester, ordinance of the mayor and council of the town, Manchester to provide for the adoption of the budget and the levy of taxes for the use of the town for the period of July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014, and to further provide for the collection of said taxes for the payment of interest and penalties accruing thereon in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the Town of Manchester and the NDA Code of Maryland, Article 23A. Then in Section 2 is where it sets the rate. Real property be further enacted and ordained at a tax of 21.6 cents on every $100 of assessed value of real property within the corporate limits of the Town of Manchester. So that's where we are. So that's where we are. Again, we have a little bit more work and then we'll, we'll vote on this next month. Do you have questions, comments from the community? Does anybody sign up? So for those of you that signed up, same rules, if you didn't get a chance to sign up and, and you'd like to, I guess I have the sign up sheet now, so it's too late. No, no, we'll, we'll let you sign up. But same thing, there's a code of conduct and, and please follow that. If you can keep your comments, you know, to a minute or two, and that's it. So we have Melinda Smith?
I'm going to be really, really quick today, okay?
Okay.
Couple of quick things. I just want, I want to say one thing. I know he's not here, but every week that I'm here, he has something personal to say to me about what I do. I'm not a law-breaking citizen. I park on my street in front of the new parking signs, by the way. I already checked. It's not a public street yet, so I can park there, by the way, just for him to know. I'm not. Since he rides by my house every day and checks to see who's there and where I park, I just want you to make that public record. As far as the information with the chief of police, I mean, you, you make that call obviously. Hopefully, you know, we'll make the right decision. If not, maybe we'll reopen it and start fresh and that's it. I do, I know everybody here's worked hard on it, I know it's been going on forever, but I especially want to thank Tammy Black, she's been wonderful, she's gotten back to me, she's done a lot of hard work. Ryan, I know you call me, I don't get to talk to you guys, so I don't know, but Aunt Kelly, she calls me, gets back to me about anything, so I just want to say thanks to everybody. I know I've kind of been a little bit trying, I'm sure, some weeks, but we'll see what happens next time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Ms. Smith, anyone that signed up, does anybody else have anything they'd like to say or add? Ms. Howe?
This is not about the police chief, but I would like to have the police signs moved on Main Street. You have them next to a one-way, you made that road, that little alley a one-way and it says "police," where you can't turn in there. Don't want, you don't want to talk about?
I'm talking about one on Main Street, right?
It says "police" and "police" and it's a one-way street, so what's the sense of having them?
I'm going to have to contact State Highway.
Yeah.
Route 30, Main Street is a state highway, so I'll have to contact...
Are they not our signs?
They are not.
Yeah. Every sign there is either theirs or they kind of control it.
Tell them to move it, it's on a one-way street and you can't get in there.
And I don't know if that sign predated the one-way or not. Do you remember? It did?
It did.
Yeah. So I, I remember them going up and I remember we changed those, these two alleys over here, one in, one out. And I remember the police wanted the one closest to them going out, which is why that one goes out.
Correct.
So, but we, we can look into that. It'll be a little bit of a...
By Friday?
Uh, we won't have it by Friday.
As fast as your state can move for you.
Right. Anybody else? Okay. Come here, Portis, Tammy?
Well, we had a good meeting last night with the Parks Foundation. It had a, kind of like a, a history on the Charlotte's Quest Nature Center and the whole foundation, and it was a very good meeting. I do have some information here for anybody that's interested in, in getting that. They kind of went over some of the benefits that the Parks Foundation is to the Town of Manchester, all kinds of things, protecting the water supply, tree maintenance, tree planting, you know, the grounds upkeep and involving the community, a lot of educational opportunities. There was three guest speakers that were able to share the different aspects of the benefits, and they're, they were very, very good. And it's something that we can all be proud of in Manchester to have that foundation here. There is the big May Fest coming up, so everybody should mark their calendars for that. It's the first weekend in May, it is every year. They, they've got like 30-plus vendors coming out, all kinds of great things, lots of animals, nature stuff, educational opportunities, master gardeners, everything you ever want to know about nature is going to be there. So make, make an effort to come on out and possibly even support the nature center with your time and your financial resources, so.
Is it a Saturday and Sunday thing?
It's a Saturday. No, I'm sorry, it's a Sunday.
Sunday and May 5th?
Yeah, May 5th, yep. Saturday, May, sorry, well, Sunday, May 5th.
Do you have a time on that?
It's the annual spring fest.
12 to 4.
And it's on, they've got a really nice newsletter they put out called The Nature Calls, and there's a lot of updates, calendar information, things for the students, just all, all kinds of information, a lot of educational things. There's the archaeological exploration information and they're going to be at the library coming up. Stephen Israel and the naturalist Sherry Fisher. So like I said, a lot of interesting things, especially if you've got young children in the house, it's, it's a great educational opportunity. So it doesn't cost anything to be a part of it, so.
Anything to report?
Everything is status quo. Nothing for me.
A big finale?
For my big finale?
On the water and capital products, I don't have anything to report. I always attend the meetings with Steve and he gives the report, so it saves me from, from giving any. Thank you, Steve.